Good evening, everybody. It's five o'clock and I'd like to welcome you to the city council meeting tonight. If you'd all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance. Can you pick the role, please, Erin?
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Sherbren.
Here.
Councilmember Pointer.
Here.
Councilmember Dittrick.
Here.
Okay, we're all here. First item tonight, Tim said there's no change to anything on the agenda.
Correct.
And does anybody else have anything else they want to change? Okay. With that, I take a motion and second to approve the agenda for tonight. And I'll sign it. Okay. Any further questions, comments? Hey, Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have our public input period. Please come to the podium here. Please state your name and address for the record before proceeding with any comments. Individual remarks are limited to five minutes with the overall public input period limited to thirty minutes. Under Iowa Open Meetings Law, the city council can take no formal action on comments given during public input period which do not relate to action items on the agenda. Does anybody have anything they'd like to say?
My name is Bella Heffler, one six Delta Highway, Manchester, Iowa. I more have a question. I'm trying to get some mulch or compost out at the brush zone. I'm just like wondering if there could be amendment, like people are there with skid loaders, they load it all up, they haul it away. I know it's a busy time of year, but I don't get any. With my little five gallon bucket, my shovel, I go out there and if it's there in the morning, I can work for it. I just have poor timing possibly. And I understand, but I also pay money to have it. And I see people there all the time, like loading up a, maybe not a big dump truck, but a big truck with all-
You missed the dump truck because my husband saw the dump truck twice.
Oh, so I was just wondering, you know, I'm just curious if there's a way that you could have a space for those of us who don't need. I mean, it seems excessive that I might buy a skid loader so I can be part of it, but you know, I'd like to get some and it's just hard for me. And I'm, I'm sending other people too. So that was my only, I mean, it's not a big deal. It's just something that I've, I've now surpassed the times, so I had to go somewhere else and just buy a little compost. But I just think maybe more people other than me are having issues with it.
Just to let the council know, this week, we are starting to send it out three times. It will be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, we will send it out. We did have one contractor that was taking a large amount of it. We have contacted them. Let us know when you need it. We'll work with you. But there's a pile out there for the majority of the people that, like you said, take it.
Well, and that was my next question. Like, are there certain days that are there? Like, I can like mark out of work and tell the ladies to stay on, so I can-
Yeah, Jason, I asked Jason, because we have questions. I asked Jason to hate that last week and he said typically he puts it out on Mondays and Fridays.
Okay.
Um, so, but it sounds like he's going to add on one day.
That's helpful. That's just all I wanted to say.
Nope. Thank you.
Good.
Anybody else?
Good evening. I'm Will Meyer and City Council people.
Can you state your name and everything, Dylan, please?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
My name is Diane. I reside at thirteen thirty two North Franklin Street, Manchester.
Thank you.
I was on Facebook about a week ago.
Okay.
Um, and I saw that the Manchester River Days were, an event was posted. As I read through it, I saw Friday night music was scheduled at the watershed for Friday, seven, from six to nine, and co-hosted by American Legion. Since I had no knowledge of this being scheduled with the chamber, I met with the chamber director and the American Legion. The American Legion had no knowledge of this event being planned. I went to the chamber director and she informed me that there is a committee called Music on the Makoka. And this is the committee that's in charge of planning, discussing the music for the three day event. Those committee members, I were told from the chamber director was herself Laura Holtz, Kurt Hines, Tanya Bradley, Mike Ryan, Tim Beck, the city manager, and Connie Baker, mayor. She stated that the meetings were held at the city hall. So I requested if I could see minutes regarding the planning of this event on my property. I requested and she said, quote, "There were no minutes of these meetings. It's just a social gathering, making these decisions." And from my past experience of being on committees and especially on the chamber for the report committee for eight years, we had minutes on every discussion we had. Whenever there is money given or used by the community, the community should know. The chamber director also brought to my attention that there was a grant proposed by the, through the city and the chamber for the music for this three day event. And it was an amount of $2,000 that was granted and received. I called the chamber director on Friday, asking her if there was any minutes, if she wanted to look back, if there was anything, and she said, no, there was not. And that the watershed will be removed from the event. This has not taken place yet. I asked, how did this event get planned, discussed, and advertised falsely on social media without my involvement, my knowledge? As I am a legal representative of the property of the watershed under the use trust. I'm asking for a meeting of the committee members or, and who has knowledge of the planning of this event. As I was told, if meetings are held at the city hall. My late husband, Jeff Ogden, and I have been very compassionate, involved, and supportive events like this in Manchester over twenty years. I am a reasonable person to, to work with and probably would have considered this location for the music event if it had been handled in a more respectful manner. So I want to thank you for listening and you know how to get in touch with me and I'm looking forward to response to my request.
And Diane, I will be ready to talk to you personally then, because I know I've been talking with Chuck and I talked to them, but I, I'm not going to do it all here publicly, but we will talk because I think some things are not completely all clear on here. So I will gladly reach out.
I just want to make myself clear. Jeff and I have been very supportive and they think that that wouldn't have been a problem, but it struck me as something very disrespectful for me.
I understand. I understand. And so, yeah, and I will, I will give you a call. Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Anybody else?
Hi.
How are you doing?
Good. Here's a letter, two three two eight Jefferson Road, Manchester. I wanted to just do a brief update. I've been doing a little bit of homework and Erin can correct me on any of my misinformation, potentially, but I wanted to just hand out some graphs. I'm sorry, but you'll probably need some glasses readers. I do, at least. These graphs are coming from the Iowa Treasure website on the internet. And it compares Manchester Independence, Animal, Sudirisville, Old Line, and Monticello. So in red, you will see the acronym LDL. That represents legal debt, debt limit. That is the max that that community should be able to borrow or bond out for. The RD is the remaining debt margin that they have available. So as you compare all of these, you will see that Manchester has a legal debt limit of twenty million and thirteen million remaining on that. So I just wanted to address some of the information that I've heard at some of the last couple of meetings during the public, public input. Unfortunately, this results in kind of drama and negativity within our community rather than taking a moment to study the facts that are out there, available on the internet. Too often we jump onto topics like municipal debt without understanding there are both sides of the issue. In my field of work, I understand finances. There is a purpose for municipal debt and if used responsibly, it can generate growth and expansion. I would like to understand what thriving communities out there have close to zero or no debt that are still alive or growing or just even in existence. I, I haven't done a search of that out on the internet, but we definitely need this. The purpose of good municipal debt is to maintain or construct our streets, our solid waste management, our sanitary sewer, our waterworks, and properly equip and fund the police, the fire nuisance, and emergency services. Not for today, but for tomorrow. This is truly a reinvestment into our community. As you compare Manchester with Monticello, and I'm kind of speaking out of turn, I think I've heard something in the works that there's another multimillion dollar bond issue in the works with Monticello. So I know that those numbers are a little low, as you can hear. Moderation is key when it comes to public, public debt and Manchester is positioned well for the future. Before we spread negativity, let's do our homework. Any questions or any clarifications that you need?
What did you say the LDL was again? I'm sorry.
That is the legal debt limit. That is like the line of credit or the most that you can.
Okay.
So I think we fare right in line with all of our surrounding communities. I was going to base it on population, but I, through this process, I learned a lot about, no, you really need to compare it on the property values which converts into the LDL. All right. Well, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything tonight? Hey, hearing none, we will move on. Start with the consent agenda. First item is three point one, approval of the minutes of our April twenty second, twenty twenty four meeting and the May sixth committee, special city council and committee of a whole meeting. Next, I need a motion to adopt resolution fifty seven approving the bills. Next, a motion to acknowledge the receipt of the following city reports and minutes of the March twentieth airport committee meeting, the April seventeenth airport committee meeting, minutes of the April twenty second, twenty twenty four board of adjustments meeting. Next, a motion to approve the following liquor applications, liquor license applications. There's a five day special class C one for Lucky White Wine Slushies for an event to be held on June sixth at Riverfront Park at three hundred West Main Street and a renewal application for the special B retail native wine license for new to you consignment and home decor on a hundred North Franklin Street. I need a motion to approve an event lease agreement with, is it Goko?
I think it's Goko.
That's the Lucky Wine Slushies for a portion of the property located at three hundred West Main Street for the June sixth event as required by the Iowa Alcohol Beverages Division. I need a motion to approve some appointments that I've made for Diane Hamel to the Planning and Zoning Commission. She'll be filling out the remainder of Kathy Reese's term. And then also to Ben Davis, who will be appointed our chief of police, or as current police chief hostile, will be retiring at the end of May. Next, a motion to adopt resolution fifty eight, and that's a salary resolution for the people listed there. Next item is a motion to review the decision of the board of adjustments for the property located at nine oh five East Main Street, Verbarians, to require your rear yard setbacks, that's hard to say, from three hundred feet or thirty feet to zero feet, excuse me, thirty feet to zero feet. Next, I need a motion to approve or set the date for May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four, five P M. Is the date and time for public hearing on proposed budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty four? Did you want to speak to that at all, Erin, or is that just?
Just part of what we went through a budget time was reestimating the numbers and so this we will officially adopt those numbers that we had talked about. There are a couple tweaks that we've, we've had to make to Grand Avenue and East Main are moving along faster than we had anticipated when we were doing the budget earlier this year. I'll have those all spelled out for you at the public hearing on the twenty eighth, the major ones anyway.
And then I also need just a motion to set a public hearing for June tenth at five P M. For the communication sites lease agreement with Comlec Internet. Next, I need a motion to approve to set June tenth at five P M. As the date and time for public hearing on proposed contract documents and estimated cost for the Commerce Corps project. I need a motion to approve supplemental agreement for maintenance of primary roads and municipalities of the Iowa Department of Transportation for a term of one year from July first of twenty twenty four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. We also need a motion to approve another supplemental agreement for maintenance of primary roads and municipalities with the Department of Transportation for the same year, July one through June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. That's for traffic line marking. And then I need a motion to approve a payment of sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty five dollars and fifty cents to Bergram for engineering services. And this is part of our twenty twenty four street project, street improvement project. Also need a motion to approve a payment totaling four thousand five hundred forty nine dollars and thirty five, thirty four cents to Burnton Room for Engineering Services. And that is for the Grand Avenue Street Extension Project. Those are all the items for our agenda or for our consent agenda. I'll take a motion in a second and then open it up for discussion. Move for approval of the consent agenda. Wait a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. All right. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. On the expense approval report, there's a bill for Bard for the dog park for about five hundred dollars. Are we reimbursed for that?
Uh, we, we can be. That's one of the part of these items we'll claim. The concrete was for the trail that was removed to get the water line back there.
Okay.
So, yeah, that'd be part of the dog park.
Okay. Right. Thank you. Any other questions?
Item three point eight, like we were discussing with, I talked to you about it, Tim. The setback from that going from thirty foot to zero feet and you, and we talked to Simons and then they're okay with it.
It's farmers. Was it Farmer's Co-op, Farmer's Union Co-op? They are fine with it. As a matter of fact, they wrote a letter of support for the project.
I just wanted that to be known that it's, we're not impeding on somebody else's property that doesn't want it.
I talked to Kurt this afternoon about it and farmers are excited because when they close that all off of the, the fence, they can't get by the bends back there. So that's going to open that up for them. So that, they're, they're all working very well together.
Awesome. Yeah.
Yeah. That's going to be a huge improvement. They're going to be able to do bigger trucks. It's just a real plus for the community. So we don't have to take our big trucks out of, out of town anymore.
Awesome. To win, right then?
Yeah, it is all around.
Any further questions? Hearing none? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Brian?
Yes.
Okay. All right. It is five nineteen. I'm opening a public hearing on the request of S and B Promotions LLC to rezon two oh nine West Marion Street from an R one single family low density district to an R two two family low density district. And the public hearing is open. Do you want to speak to this, Tim?
Uh, we have, right, we do have.
Is the Bizzle's here?
Yeah, he does have a different name.
Hi.
Robert.
Robert.
Robert or Randy?
Randy.
Randy Brooks is here. I think we talked about it. He's one of the owners of the, of the business. Randy, if you'd like to come out and talk about what you're trying to do and would like to do over there.
Randall Bizzle Brooks. Uh, one oh four March Court. Um, all, all we're looking to do, we have, we've acquired a lot of properties in town, as many of you know. And some of them, they're just, they're small properties. Uh, this one is, for instance, tonight that we're looking at, we want to put a condo. I come in Thursday and spoke with planning and developing it. I, I, we, what I, what we're shooting for there is push this one through. Um, we have a lot of other open lots available in town. We'd like to keep building them. Get one up affordable. Fifteen hundred foot, fifteen hundred square foot each side, like I said, twelve hundred foot house, two bedroom condo. Obviously a middle wall, uh, three hundred or so square foot garage, most likely built on a slab with either a storm shelter in the garage or even like a fruit cellar down below. Our biggest thing is, is just try to make them affordable. We think we can do that. We're anywhere from the two hundred to two fifty range. Condos are selling left and right for three hundred and fifty. We think we can get them a little bit more affordable and push, push a bunch of them out basically. With that being said, we had a little bit of issues with the lot, lot size.
Correct.
Which we're going to work out.
Yeah. Um, so basically what's going on, uh, if we go rezon from R one to R two, R one is single family. R two allows for attached single family or duplex. But the R two requires if you're going to attach a single family or duplex, you have to have seventy foot frontage. A majority of our older lots, our original town lots are sixty six foot. So they'd have to apply for an exception under the board of adjustment to rent that in there. Planning is going to review the code and see if they can reduce that requirement on the frontage from, from seventy down to, I think, sixty. And that, that just means a sixty foot lot, they could still put a duplex under. They can figure out how to meet the setbacks. But they can make it on there and get it to fit. And so this doesn't impact the neighborhoods. It just changes how we look at that setup.
And with this particular lot, we, we're pretty sure, I mean, we've measured, we've, without having a survey, you know, and which we will, we think we can basically put up a fifty by sixty and still have our side yards, the frontage, and then our rear, which actually overlooks the, the Whitewater Rapids with maybe clearing some trees out and such, but.
Like what Joe put down here and double ones like Joe's, Joe put up.
Yes.
But these would be single stone garage?
Single stone garage.
It'll be more boxy.
Right.
Yeah, they will be boxy, but I, you know, it's the best we can honestly probably put up on that lot without, we looked at maybe trying some split foyer stuff, but then we're losing if older folks or handicap, we want to try to keep it, probably handicap accessible is our goal.
And that means fly out too.
Yes, I think we can reach out to more of a fan base of them if we do that. I mean, not every lot's going to be the same, but that lot in particular, I think we can do that. We're, we're almost certain. And like I said, I, I have a sketch in here. It looks like I sat, was sitting at the bar drawing on a napkin of what we got, but that's not the case. I mean, it's, it's, it's very simple, but we haven't, we've talked with architect, we've talked with, you know, Delhi Lumber and everybody. We just haven't proceeded with plans, pictures of what everything's going to look like, which we will. I mean, that'll be the first thing that we do to, you know, bring them in and kind of show what we're, what we're thinking and how we're going to go about it. And then, like I said, this, it won't just be a one and done. We have other properties that we would like to, there's a few houses that need to come down on the south side and, and, you know, if we could make this work up there, maybe we could keep some affordable condos down there. And then we run out of lots and we'll just start buying more lots and building roads and I don't know.
But we like the fact that, we like the fact that you're using current infrastructure. That is so cool.
Yeah.
Awesome. So we appreciate that.
Well, and some of these, like I said, you know, we talked the other day, but some of these houses, they need a lot of work, but we're doing it and they're selling. We're selling and we're not renting them. You know, we have no intentions of renting these. I mean, if they sit for a year empty, they sit for a year empty. I don't think they will in that price range. I think, I think we get one up, I think it, I think we'll be lucky selling them. Now that could change too, but then that's on us. So.
Well, we wish you good luck.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, we'll see. You know, it's, I think the needs there, um, especially in that price range. I don't, I don't, I'm not scared of that. I think, I think people aren't scared of the two to two fifty range. Even if we could get it done for right at two hundred, I mean, somebody's going to have a twelve hundred square foot home with a one stall garage and their money's going to something. And we're looking at it too, like, you know, there's, I don't know what we pay for property taxes up there. Not much. Grass is cheap. So that's just something we can do with that land and, and it's, I mean, we've had, you know, I've had people call, you know, what's your plans with it and this and that. And we've kind of been sitting on it, then we got talking about the condo. We know, we know it's going to be tight, but we can still make them side yards. I think we'll be a little tight there. It just seems like it's going to work. We feel it will. And if we got to make changes, we will. But like I said too, the, one of the other things we want to push is, I know people are afraid of the slab concept. But if we put a bunker or anything to where, you know, storms or anything, I think that's going to, same thing Mike Blacky did up here and same thing Joe does. I think Joe, Joe puts them in the ground or like a pantry or something. Yeah. Cause those are all slab.
Well, and, and you could do it as a utility room too.
Right.
Use a utility room, but, and I was surprised that when I talked to them about it, that they are rated for F fives and I couldn't believe that.
Really?
Yeah.
So you had to done a twelve inch thick wall. I don't know.
Well, it's just cement bunker that's, you know, concreted, I think, rebarred into the, into the slab.
And clearly that's how we would go about it. But, and I think, I, I don't know, Mike, I don't think Mike did that. Mike Blacky, when he just did a house up here on slab, kind of looked like he had thick steel walls up or something up in there. I don't know what he did, but it must be, you know, safe as well. That's maybe another avenue we could look at, but we haven't dug that far into it. I just, we get this pushed through, I imagine we'll be working with Tim Hines and, and try to push things through.
Get the rezon first before you can rebar the rest.
Yes, that's when we'll come in with our blueprints and pictures and, you know, kind of, it gives you a little bit more, better of an idea than my bar napkin idea, what we're looking at.
Not even ketchup on there, is there?
Yeah. What's that?
No ketchup on there, is there?
Oh, maybe a little spilled beer, but, but no, that's kind of what we're looking to do. I don't know. I just think it, it's just, I don't know, the more housing you can get, not just, just housing, but affordable. I, I think it should be better for everybody. And we can reach out to more people and chew up some other lots. Cause you know, like I said, some of them lots, yeah, we can fix them up and, but you know, maybe we can get a duplex into that. Not, I shouldn't say duplex, because when I say duplex, I, to me, that's like, we're going to rent them out and we have, I, we discussed the other day too, I've been doing that rental stuff way too long and we'd just rather sell things and, you know, move on from the rental business. So that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And thanks for all the work you had on those houses too.
Appreciate it. It's making, we're putting a dam in it, I should say.
Anybody else have anything left to say? It's a public hearing right now. So it's open to the audience.
Richard Bowles, eight oh four South Second Street. I'd like to see about a permit for my shop if I could, so I could keep my cars down there. I don't know if I could get a dealer's license or anything like that to be available or not.
Uh, this isn't.
Yep, public hearing right now. We're just dealing with the rezoning.
Oh, yeah. So we think of not.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Yeah.
So what should I discuss this later?
Yeah, why don't you approach the mayor and I after the meeting? Because the first part of the meeting.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Richard. Anybody else? Hearing that, I'm going to close the public hearing at five twenty nine. And before you, you, I need a motion to proceed. And before you, you, I need a motion to proceed with the first consideration and adoption of ordinance nine, changing this from a R one to R two zoning.
Tim, can we wave the first and second reading of this and just go to the third?
You can, again, uh, it, it may be proper for us to have the first reading of this meeting and then wave the second meeting, our second reading at the next meeting, because planning zoning commission would still like to review our ordinance and see if we can change that so we don't have to go through the board of adjustment to get an exception in order for them to put a condo up.
Okay.
And they did talk about the timing with Bizzle, so he knew that it was gonna be about like this, so.
Yeah.
And gives you time to get some things done too.
Yes.
Well, I make a motion to approve, uh, the first reading of ordinance nine. I'll second that one.
Any further discussion? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes.
All right.
Good luck. Thank you. Much appreciated.
All right, next we have a regular agenda items. We'll go to, first one is I need a motion to adopt resolution fifty nine, and that's approving the agreement for land acquisition with the Delaware County Fair Society for the Grand Avenue Street Extension Project. And Tim, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, basically this memorializes what we've negotiated, talked with, uh, the fairgrounds as far as of the dedication of the road right of way for the Grand Avenue Extension and the installation of the trail in the future. Uh, so it's just, puts everything in writing, we've already accomplished, uh, in the plans, the requests, uh, fairgrounds had, so right now we're just formally approving it.
Gonna get a chance to read through the agreement. If so, I entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
All sorted. Any further questions, Conny's? Okay, Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
No.
Brian?
No.
And Joe?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Next, um, I need a motion to approve the request of Police Captain Chad Wright to purchase ten new Axons, is that correct? Body four cameras and six new Axon Fleet three cameras at a total cost of a hundred twenty eight thousand, one hundred seventy nine dollars and ten cents to be paid over five years. And Chief, do you want to speak to this at all?
Yeah.
It's all part of our capital improvement projects. Gotta get stolen. So it's all part of our capital improvement projects, um, uh, it's pretty well spelled out over the timeframe of five years, basically we're gonna get a new body cameras upon delivery, um, the first set, the second set comes out two and a half years, we get new in-car cameras, after five years, we get another set of new in-car cameras, and it's paid over five years, um, I was shocked at the price, just like the rest of you, until you sit down and actually sit down and figure out what we're getting for a project, that's a pretty good deal. Um, it keeps us up to date, um, our body, our, our in-car cameras. Sometimes I get six, seven years out of them and then they, you know, I keep parts downstairs to keep them alive until we get the car traded off, so we're taking parts about that timeframe anyway, it kind of makes sense. So, um, like I said, that was a pretty good deal. It will definitely simplify things for us, um, no more having to pull a card out of a camera, bring it in, dump it under the, under the server and then put it back in the car and automatically dumps it as soon as it gets a wifi connection with our, our police department wifi, it automatically dumps everything, or won't have to chase down body cameras anymore. So it's on our own system, so it'll definitely make things more efficient, especially getting stuff to the county attorney. So, no, we'll be guys up at ten o'clock in the morning, getting your body camera.
Yeah, and just to clarify, this is gonna be split, um, split up over a sixty month contract and run at twenty five thousand, six ninety five eighty two a year.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Unfortunately, those things have gone through the rope and price last few years. Unbreakably to the break.
But a necessity.
Yes, I wouldn't do it without a body camera anymore.
No.
Any questions?
Okay, thank you, Tim.
Thank you very much.
Yep. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Any further questions? Okay, Joe?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
And Bill?
Yes. Thanks, man.
Thanks. All right, next I need a motion to approve pay estimate number two in the amount of a hundred and eighty one thousand, eight hundred forty five dollars and twenty one cents to top grade excavating for the twenty twenty four East Main Street Improvement Project.
So moved.
A second. Any questions? Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Under state.
Okay, Bill?
This was the same man, okay.
Yes.
I don't always know how long it's what, so I.
Next, um, I need a motion to approve, uh, pay estimate number one in the amount of ninety two thousand, eighty six dollars and eighty two cents to Pierce Tobin Construction for the Grand Avenue Street Extension Project.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll second that.
Any questions? Joe?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Brian?
No.
Linda?
No.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Next, um, I need a motion to proceed with the first consideration and adoption of ordinance ten, and that's amending the Code of Ordinances for the City of Manchester, Iowa by amending chapter one twenty nine, the Adult Entertainment. Do you want to speak to this, Tim?
Yeah, uh, what we're doing is just striking male and female impersonators from the definitions of adult entertainment. That's the only change, uh, to our adult entertainment, uh, ordinance. Uh, this was brought up because of the, uh, drag show, uh, that was kind of, um, apparently this item has been on before a number of other cities and across the state last year, uh, and under legal advice from the city attorney and city attorneys across the state, they have, uh, recommended the city council strike that language, that we don't a violation, uh, constitutional.
Just for clarification, what does this still mean though as far as what cannot be done in town?
You still, the problem, the drag show, impersonators does not require anything of a sexual nature. So you can still prohibit the things that you mean to be prohibiting sexually explicit activities, nudity can be regulated. But to just say female impersonators would is just over, is over broad, so that's why it's not allowed. So I, I don't think it really changes the intent of the ordinance at all.
All right. With that, I'm looking for a motion in a second to adopt, I'm going to adopt, okay.
I'll second.
Any other questions? Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Next, need a motion to approve the quote per, from Bobcat for a snow blower attachment in the amount of seven thousand, seventy three dollars and forty seven cents. And I believe Jason Hayes been talking to us about this.
Yeah, uh, we talked about this over the budget work sessions and had people kind of, or two weeks in January, we had a bunch of snow dumped on us, but when that snow fell, we didn't have any frost underground, so it was really concerning for us to use our big wheel loader with the snow blower on there, cause we figured we'd break up the trail. We wanted some lighter piece of equipment that would fit on there a little bit better, so, uh, after those two weeks, we kind of had a wider weather, uh, we did talk about budget amendment, uh, rearranging some funds. Uh, we'll use local option sales tax dollars, uh, that is dedicated for snow, or per excuse me, uh, trail and walkway um, improvements and maintenance, and that will be used to finances. So their recommendation is to purchase a high flow, uh, snow, snow blower attachment from Bobcat and Buke.
It was amazing how close the two bids were. Yeah, I mean, I agree, we gotta go with a little bid, but it's kind of shocking that the other one didn't go a little closer.
Yeah, it'd be nice if it was there just because it's close, so.
I make a motion to approve the quote from Bobcat on the snow blower attachment.
I'll second.
Any other questions, Conny? Eric, Bill?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Joe?
Yes.
All right, and then nuisance updates, property updates.
Okay, we've got three pending right now, um, there's one at eight oh four South Second Street, scheduled for trial on July ninth, so that's just where we're at. That'd be of, of Richard Bowers property. And, uh, then there's one at four oh five Grant that we're, it's been filed and the time for filing an answer is, uh, expired and we're really waiting for the court to enter an order. And the initial appearance on one that was just filed on Madison Street, uh, was continued, uh, the judge was sick, so it was continued to May thirteenth, which is today, so that's the appearance date, so that's where she can come in and say whether she wants to contest or not. So we'll wait to the end of the day and see what they did. And that's all we have, it's just those three.
Tim did not provide me with an update on where he's at before the number of, I know he's he had eight properties for, uh, mowing, but he's working on, he had a few properties that they mowed the front yard, or maybe the neighbor mowed the front yard, cause they're tired of looking at it, not the back yard, uh, they're, they had to, to build today to get it mowed. Tim asked about whether or not we should have the contractor mow the whole yard again, I told him, have contractor pays the same. I mow the whole yard, so it's all you at the same time.
While we're discussing mowing, um, there has been some people that approached me about blowing it into the street too as well.
Yeah, and, and that is illegal under our ordinance, uh, placing, uh, debris onto the street, uh, probably right away is not permitted, it bugs up storm sewers, uh, typically our guys get through and it's, if it's incidental, meaning maybe they mow underneath the deck, they usually don't get too worked up about it, it's when they blow the majority of the right away or even the whole front yard out into it, that's when we'll stop and have a conversation with them, uh, we may involve the police department at that point in time. Um, it, usually it's a warning the first time, it's, but it's, uh, filed the second time. Now, we do have a few people who blow it out there and then, once they're done mowing, they go back out with the snow, or their leak blower and blow it back up on, or bag it up.
Any other questions of Jim, Tim? That's all you have? Do you have anything else? Cause you're the next person on.
I have nothing else to report.
Okay, uh, Tim?
Yes, engineer.
Oh, engineer update, I skipped right over that. You guys are gonna get away with not doing anything tonight.
They might like us, but not, they don't probably don't like us that much.
Okay, so sorry about that, stay on.
Okay.
I don't have a whole lot, just, uh, East Main Street. Um, had a progress meeting last week Friday, uh, working on sanitary sewer, water service, sanitary sewer services and water services this week, they're gonna start storm sewer this week as well. Um, they'll probably take them about two weeks, they thought, by the end of May or first part of June, they would start getting grading, start grading for the road, so hoping to start seeing some concrete go down in June, hopefully, um, which is obviously good, um, so I'm, I'm doing pretty, staying pretty consistent with their schedule. Um, depending on what happens with the weather here this week, next week, I know they've had a few rain days in there, but kind of play that by ear, obviously. Um, Kamelak, they've been communicating with Kamelak a little bit to get, get a few handhold relocated, um, I've been working well for last few months, but um, we'll kind of chop them, get those taken care of before they get to paving, this is the biggest concern there. So, I'm saying this, can't find a few anything to add, um, otherwise unless they made any questions.
They're still on schedule?
Yeah, yeah, they're staying, and they're actually revised schedule they submitted, um, they're actually a couple of days ahead of schedule, but like I say, just depending on what happens with the weather, I mean, they've been meddling in some wet conditions out there, I mean, surface is wet, once they start getting digged down, it's not so bad, but, um, other than, I mean, they had groundwater too that they're dealing with, but the rain is just making things kind of soupy at the surface. But like I said, sand does help out there.
Try to pour the three-way stop first and maybe hopefully open it up sooner.
So I'm at a progress meeting on May thirtieth, um, and then we did ask that the general top grade talk with their sub, with Wix prior to that meeting, so then we kind of have a game plan of what they're gonna do for sure. Um, they're gonna pave full with, if they're gonna come through and do the main line all the way through or what, but, um, I mean, they'll only be, they'll only be able to pave so much with the pavement, they'll come back and do intersections at a different time. Um, so it just kind of depends, they'll be able to do some of that work, um, hopefully they can do some paving without driving on the main lines, so they can pretty much, once the main line's done, day or two later, they can start doing some of those intersections without too much impeding, so they can kind of keep things going as quick as possibly to get, get that concrete down um, as quick as possible. Once they get the street paved, um, they'll have to have traffic on the street for businesses, access and to, you know, to then pave sidewalks and driveways, so there'll be some access on the street, on the new street in order to do sidewalks and drives later. Um, the intent will be to try to keep the public out and just kind of allow access for businesses and try to, cause there's still gonna be a lot going on, but that'll be a challenge, but, so.
What are your, kind of your, uh, ETA of the street? Cause I can't get a camper out right now, my life is just gnawing me.
Yeah, I don't, say I don't wanna give them official date, I know they talked about starting for, um, second week in June potentially, so we don't wanna get anything too final on, but he's, the question too is with the fair coming up, but.
Not good.
Um.
She said something sooner, I got a place for your parking.
But after, say, after our May thirtieth meeting and once we know our things are out in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a little bit more than an answer, like I say, we don't wanna, definitely don't wanna say anything as far as, that's gonna be for sure done by the fair at this point, it's too early to tell, so, um, obviously, everybody's aware of when the fair is, but um, you know, they're, they are moving fast, it's not like they're going slow, they're, they're chugging right along the weather and what's going on, they're, they're they're moving pretty quickly out there for what's going on, so, um, so yeah, they're, they were talking, start paving potentially the second, second week in June. So I'd say we'll know more after, for our next meeting on May thirtieth.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Jason, you're up.
So, uh, Grand Avenue Water Main Installation is complete, they actually, uh, loaded it last week and flushed the mains today, they actually got the first bacteria sample, we'll send that in today. Um, we'll do a second one tomorrow, assuming those pass, they'll go ahead and do a pressure test on that, um, been working on relocating, uh, the gravel for the fair access drive, it's gonna get straightened out instead of going on that northwesterly angle in, it's gonna come straight out and tie in perpetually to the street, they were working on that today, uh, as well as trying to get some, uh, topsoil striping completed so they can work on the grading. I expect, uh, storm sewer installation to be occurring yet this week into next week, I'm still on track to be looking to pave here, uh, prior, plus or minus the first of June, so. Um, and then for, been in constant communication with, uh, Jeannie over at the fair, just to let her know, um, as far as the access and everything, just for public's information who watches this, that you know, that diagonal, uh, access drive to the fairgrounds is not accessible now, it'll be, until after, uh, the project is complete and the street's open.
Questions, Jason, number? All right, thanks, Jason. All right, since I already asked Jim, I'll ask Tim now, you got anything?
Um, yeah, again, we're, we're working on a few, uh, few projects, I'm trying to get things wrapped up with A one as far as getting a development agreement signed. Uh, we're still working on the street, as you know, when we first put the street plans in front of you, it was called Development Lane, it's not Commerce Court, they came back, interest requests came back with the name. Um, so we're trying to get those bids out by the end of the month, uh, so we can accept them, review them in June, try to keep this on, on task and, I don't know, progress there. Uh, we, we have Joe Hildbrand looking at doing another phase, so we'll start talking to him here pretty soon, he still has quite a bit left to do in this first phase, but, uh, he's looking at, he didn't think, well, cause he's looking ahead at least, so he knows what's going on there. Uh, Wes Filthy has been in, talked to me regarding his, his current projects and his future projects, uh, we uh, still need to get things worked out, uh, that one's ran into a little bit of a hurdle, but we're still working our way through that one. Um, other than that, we have, uh, just a couple of other businesses that are kicking tires, we're, uh, New Mexican Restaurant opened up. Uh, we have a couple of businesses looking downtown, so trying to see some stuff going there, um, and then in the first week in June, we got a lot of stuff going on, so, that's all I have.
Okay. All right, Karen?
Nothing.
Hey, Brian?
Nothing, just sad to see Carl's feed's gonna be shutting down.
I don't know if that's been announced yet, has it been announced?
Well.
I've heard it, sure.
I've heard it, yeah, I've heard it, so. Forty-one years.
Yes.
Who's that?
Linda?
Nothing.
Mary Ann?
Nothing.
Joe?
No.
Bill?
Nope, nothing.
Um, only thing I just wanted to leave, whatever we know, is it's National Police Week. So I want to acknowledge our Chief Jim Hostile, Captain Chad Wright, Sergeant Brad Comer and David Trumbly, Investigator John Pierce, Officers Stone Allen, Jordan Hopner, Dylan Sinar, Nicholas Hall. Did I miss anybody?
Yeah.
Who?
No.
Well, I haven't missed anybody, okay, and Canine Officer Ace.
Yes.
Um, just thank them for everything they do to keep our community safe, so thank you. Um, I don't have anything else, so, um, I'd like to thank you all for joining us tonight, and I have a motion from Brian and a second from Bill that we are adjourned in. We are adjourned.